Well, they're long by one eighth.
Well, I tell you what the they really turned.
Well.
I figured next month.
For yours?
Yeah.
Would you plan it too?
Yeah.
Right?
I figured next week, come on, someone.
Uh.
They sold a lot of two nines.
Did you really?
Yeah.
Wow.
Nice. Yeah, new tech number of two nines, really good on alkali and sclerosis, they just need to plant them in sand and they they over.
Really?
They wouldn't turn turn.
Turn. Turn new tech.
Move.
Uh, please. And I was shooting my gun.
Peanear?
Hey Roger, I took your advice, I put fifty on it, sold it Sunday. It's three guys after.
Yep. I think they bring that tractor.
MXM one forty.
Hmm.
Well, this short twenty-two hundred dollars.
What'd you get for it?
Fifty for two thousand seven. My cousins. The core with the cylinder, my ass tractor, old ten eighty-six with the adjustable hydraulic, nineteen five is what they're asking. Tech would be shit. That's a late seventies, early eighties.
So he just that didn't didn't need to try it anymore like.
No, it's a it was a spare and I had the combines dad had the tractor, so that's one less tractor I got. I I see. I can get by with the other three, other four that I'm buying.
How come gas is going?
I don't know. The tree went down with the whole sudden.
Yeah, so it's been going down, but the gas has gone up like thirty cents or twenty some cents a gallon.
But gas is cheaper than oil, there's Mason City. I went to Mason City last Friday and it was a dime higher over there.
Yeah, what is it now?
Well, I filled up last night because it's going up at one stop, there's still uh three. Three thirty-nine.
That's what it is in time. I filled up there Sunday.
We got when we left last weekend, we left Ankeny down there, we got we got two ninety.
Uh Dolores, that's still just yesterday. A women's club asked me to speak about election security yesterday and she was there.
Say about Leroy, how he's doing?
Cause he's been sick.
Oh, yeah.
He's just on there, he can't be too sick.
Yeah, I don't know, he's been, he was in the hospital a couple of times, I don't think, and he had dizziness, something in his ear. I haven't heard lately how he's.
Morning Dan.
Morning.
How are you this fine Monday morning?
Doing pretty good.
Good.
This is my favorite time of years. I don't like what comes after it, but.
No.
This part of the.
No, I agree with you.
Yeah, you got an hour pieces.
I was going to the doctor today with sinus infection.
They were yelling fifty nine, that's pretty telling us we had them someday.
There's you and.
You can do it.
Yeah. You win.
Two, the lighting second.
And yeah.
Yeah.
Gee, these make it really tight, that's three hours. Who was your other sidekick?
Sure, I gotta see my little brother.
Actually, it did.
It gets to you from the goal. So that helps.
Good. We used yesterday.
Oh, did you? Of course, I haven't been up here.
Mine, wanting to go up there, my shoes kicking, really, really green, thick grass, yeah.
Air's gotten a lot tighter since I.
Yeah, it's all kind of narrow. Nice.
I seen Tommy baby.
I mean, I think, I think thirty square.
Yeah.
Okay, I was kind of stiff from sore, playing real well.
I stayed forty-four.
Okay, five on Thursday, so.
By this, yes.
Six.
Yes, who said it's a bushes yard?
You do?
No. Our last got assigned the bushes yard.
Of course.
Uh, that might be a benefit to you.
Yeah.
I talked to him the other day and boy, he's been around, he's trying to like, he's seeing me at the gas station, he didn't know where to park, he's like. I'm like, what? I'd take Linda to go get her concealed weapon, sure.
I've I've said it before, but there's a case where it didn't ruin two marriages. Yeah, um. Green or.
It's supposed to rain too?
All out last night.
Oh.
Going back from Bruce yesterday, it was a heck of a thunderstorm, bank drive.
It was lightning like crazy.
Big lightning like crazy.
Yeah.
It was.
Yeah.
Get back home.
Yeah.
I had to look twice because all the wind tower lights and also you see lines going across, I'm like, wait a minute, that ain't wind towers.
I was sitting in the office looking north and I kept seeing lightning, you know, I like out of the corner of my eye.
It was a shape of some.
One or not.
It was.
We had this last thing last night.
Apparently must have rained down by maybe because either rabbits.
Saying that the government down there Saturday.
We kept wondering if the road was dry, man. One of them says, pretty good places, so shit, here we go, the car. Right, yeah, self self. I just sit there for two hours and I don't pull the bell, right, a lot of traffic. You tell. All right. On Sunday in Testo, when I said, I said, I got two guys that are very interested in that, and so I told them, I said, I don't know. What's your name, what do you call your price, I said, I got two guys interested, why are you all right, I said, I said, talk to me in a month. Then I'll probably. I'll take it.
Okay.
But my dad's my buddy.
I'm both probably on that brown.
So they we they.
Oh, they're good.
They.
What about you, he chose for us to do the election, so they can hear, but he yeah, chose to have their.
They could have just gone out, that's.
Yeah, they're paying for it. Yeah, they're.
Well, that.
Jeff was. Best shot was. All right.
But what I. I don't know, why, why? Yeah.
You had to know because you weren't. Not for. Right? If you go through COVID, watch, it's not somebody's end of government parts, always a shirt, of course, no. No, really? I didn't know if from seventeen to COVID, it's speed limit like pretty slow on there, I didn't feel that until my daughter chewed me out. And it's like twenty-five thirty here.
And that is, and it's a lot of trouble with the immigrants down there.
I wonder. They have a body that live there, I think, from that changing place. Stand through the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on my nation, under God, indivisible,天地一體，
Thank you. Any public discussion? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda claims, conservation claims and minutes on the September sixth meeting?
Wasn't here, so I'm not gonna do it. Do you want to hear this week?
She wasn't here last meeting.
I'll make a call.
Motion by Casey, second by Flath.
Yeah.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We're up to monthly update on the veterans affairs, Dan.
August was a pretty, pretty busy month for me, uh, I had a number of calls, uh, a total of sixty-four. Uh, we had fifty-nine messages, sixty-one walk-ins and forty-two appointments. Uh, we transported four veterans that month for their medical appointments. Currently, I'm sitting in twenty-five open planes with VA, I have eight that are ready for decision and seven that are pending development that I'm trying to get completed. Uh, some of the things that we had done this month, uh, had some new hire training on the ninth of September over at the election center for six new hires out of the various counties in our district. Uh, then we went down and taught for a day at D F Dodge to state hires around state. Uh, last week, there was an open house over in Palo Alto on the fifteenth, so went over to the VFW lodge and networked veterans and did a Q and A with them as well. And then, uh, Friday last week, went over to the Clay County Fair, the VA booth Friday. Represented on Saturday, uh, my department with a celebration of life for a veteran in Makota. Uh, so spent a couple of hours up there. And currently getting ready for fall school in October, uh, still working a lot of planes with the new PACD Act that recently got approved by the president. Also getting a lot of calls on the D F June toxic water civil lawsuit, but uh I redirect them to the the appropriations there, unless it's VA centric. And still continuing my Vet Pro pile assessment evaluation of the software program. Um, they're sending in several suggestions for upgrades and improvements, there are some healthcare forms that are not listed in the program that. Both some of those are going to be implemented in their next version of upgrade, so I've got about forty days into the new program, it seems to be working pretty good. Uh, still trying to figure some things out, but overall pretty successful. And that's pretty much it, other than just working on planes and getting ready for the fall school, that's really all I have. Something to your questions. Don.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
You're doing a good job.
Guys, have a great day.
You too.
This is over, Jack. Yes, sir. We do in that one?
I'll give Dan.
Oh, missed one.
Pardon Dan, uh, we're in our board meeting, the next item up is the stuff for sixty, so I'll put your paper here, so. Are you still there? Perfect.
Happens when we don't meet, we can't. Done?
Don't forget.
Does Marge need to be in here for this? Does Marge need to be in here for this?
Yeah, she should be.
Probably.
It better go in the minutes.
Yeah. Yes, he had a, Dan had a completion hearing for Webster County at nine and he figured it would go for a while, so he just out so he'd be available. Yeah.
Special election is the thirteen thousand six hundred, whatever that is, that's the complete total, unless something comes in, but sorry, we know that is a total, but that's special.
Sure.
Dan, we are just finishing up signing claims and Marge is just coming in now, so.
Ready, Marge, for some minutes?
Yeah.
Good. Our next thing on the agenda is to approve the men agreement with Minnesota landowners for DD sixty sub one. Dan, are any changes from what you emailed out?
So I had to do with a question, what?
Rod, Rod heard asked if there is any changes from the draft that's in our packet and stuff, but no, that'd be the signed copy from Johansson's, that's the final.
So, so if I were to repeat that back to you, uh, everybody has the signed copy that's that was executed by Johansson's, is that correct?
Yep, that's, that's in our folder, yep.
Okay, then, yep, that's, that's the one that we have, that no further changes based from that.
Well, I would need a motion to approve the agreement with Minnesota landowners.
This is still that Jim Hudson.
Yeah, yeah, I'd make that motion.
Do I have a second? Oh, Doug's got it, of course.
Does this address any roads, Cassius County roads?
It goes under the road.
What do you mean, does it address?
Is that agreement, does this have anything, because my understanding this is some sort of an agreement and I don't know where the drainage district ends. And it's for land outside of a drainage district and there is a road that is between the two. I just wondered if anything in this agreement addresses that.
Doug, could you, or Dan, could you hear that?
So the question was, does anything address the road, the road itself?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, no, we didn't put any specifics on the road. Um, my understanding and discussions up to this point is that um, you know, the, the basic agreement is that Cassius County maintains the entire section of that or the entire road through that section. Um, and I've had discussions with, with Minnesota. Uh, it's, it's not their county secondary road system, it's actually their township roads. Um, and they really didn't see any problem with, with running through and, and moreover, wanted to kind of avoid even having a conversation on it. Um, so, so that's completely in our court. Um, and that just really was out of the scope for this particular agreement, are there concerns that you have, Doug, with that?
Well, where would be, where would the boundary of the drainage district be?
He asked where the boundary of the drainage district would be. So wouldn't that be the um, based on, on the map that's in that agreement, showing the benefit of acres?
Yeah, I mean, it, it's that would be, I guess it depends on what, what the purpose is behind the question, we're, we're including more or less the entire watershed in the district. Um, this agreement is being treated more as a private agreement. Um, but, but yeah, we're essentially including all of this land into the drainage district.
My, the purpose for the question is to understand understand what is happening at that boundary, for example, if the owners on the north in Minnesota would place a larger, would do a tile improvement in Minnesota and run that water and go under the road and hook onto the drainage district facility, is there anything that would?
The, the road.
That would allow that to happen?
The road would be the limiting factor, the pipe through the road will not be changing after this project, that's.
There's something in the, the agreement that states that.
That's the whole basis of the improvement project, they can hook on to the outlet, but they don't cross the road, they don't have access to cross the road. They can hook on.
Said in the agreement that they will not be able to, and that will be recorded in Iowa and Minnesota?
The, the language and, and Dan, I don't know if you want to jump in here, but the language in the agreement is about their ability to connect to the outlet, which is what we bring across the road, right?
Yeah, yep, that's a, that's a great way of saying that, Kyle, it's, they're, they're allowed to connect to the outlet, which is spelled out in the map as being on the north side, I mean, displayed as being on the north side of the road. Um.
Yeah, it'll be eighteen inch through the road.
For the purposes of of the agreement, they're also submitting to Iowa law, I believe that's still in there, is.
Yep, that is.
Yep, um, so I mean, in, and I, I, I don't know that much about private drainage, but I mean, an Iowa landowner can't come and just dig up the road without asking any questions, or, or is that the case, I don't know.
In Iowa, private landowner has, has the right to cross a road, they need to go through some steps. But that's certainly certainly a possibility.
They would have to get permission from the other landowner, right?
No, the road department.
So they don't need permission from the landowner on the other side of the road?
Well, the way you're describing me, the drainage facility is in the road.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Well, it goes through the road, yeah, but if they're gonna connect on the other side.
This is kind, this is a, a unique situation.
Yeah. Um, I got to dig up the wording, I guess you guys have that right in front of you, but I do know that the, that the exhibit that, that the way that the contract is set up, they are connecting to an outlet. And that outlet is shown as being on the north side of the road, and it might even be worded that way as well.
It, it is worded that they are connecting to the outlet, which is what we provide across the road.
Yep. Yep, so, I mean.
District or?
The district, yes.
Yep.
The board is in, from the road department.
The district.
Yeah, so I mean, if the, if they, if they come to the roads department asking for a permit to cross the road with a larger tile, the answer is no. And, and we have an agreement to back that up.
Do we, do we need to get Hudson on the phone for this too, I mean, I don't know if he'd be available, but.
I think it's, I think it's pretty well, pretty cut and dry in there.
I guess, do you guys have any concerns that way? I think the language spells it out pretty clearly that it's connecting to the outlet.
It's uncomfortable with it. He's a turkey roots.
I've not received any of the indications you guys alluded to.
Marge, you have a copy there? It's referred to as a Minnesota outlet many times in there.
We get, I just, you guys have a second on it?
The only thing he could force a bigger tile into the eighteen inch.
Well, I mean, they could hook up a sixty inch to the eighteen, but it's not gonna move any more water.
You mean, it's gonna blow it out, if you don't.
Yeah, I mean, they're still limited by the pipe in the road. And there's a dollar threshold for smaller repairs, which there, Dan had figured out, there are about seven percent of the cost of the main. So five thousand should be subs, more than substantial to get us up to the public hearing and engineering dollar thresholds. They just didn't want a huge bill coming in mail that they had no, no warning about, which was okay.
Fees and, and maintenance.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Yeah, so, so if there needs to be a fifty thousand dollar repair on, on, let's say, the Minnesota lateral, for instance, in, in a normal scenario, uh, we wouldn't have a hearing, we'd just go ahead and, and do the repair, right? It legally speaking, that is, not, not to say that we would, wouldn't have like an informal hearing. In this case, they do want to have the right to sit down and talk that through before we go through with the, with the repair. So if their total cost for, for any repair is gonna be greater than five thousand dollars, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna call them in and talk it through with them.
So in other words, it's still going to be part of the district facilities, the drainage tile in Minnesota?
No, the tile in their field will be abandoned, they will have a county drainage district outlet that crosses the road that they can hook into.
The old county tile that runs through there is going to be abandoned, it will be private tiles, so why do we need the agreement for five percent?
Five thousand?
Yeah.
Because they still pay on the Minnesota lateral that comes up to their property and the main. So they still benefit from the rest of the system below that. So if there's repairs, they will still pay their fair share, which is what all the Iowa landowners were concerned about and wanting from the beginning.
Yeah, so, so they're still gonna pay assessments for any repairs in Iowa on the main or the Minnesota lateral. Um, and the agreement's set up, so anything that their cost is five thousand dollars or less, they're just gonna pay it, no questions asked. Um, if it gets above that, then, then they wanna talk through that with us.
So is it recorded in the courthouse in Minnesota then? This agreement?
It would just be recorded here.
Well, then it wouldn't have any bearings unless it's recorded in Minnesota.
Yeah, I don't, I'm, um, there's no reason we can't record it in the courthouse in Minnesota.
I would think you would want to.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good, yeah.
Yep.
I think.
And that, that was part of it, is we wanted to make sure that any landowner, uh, after the Johansons, um.
Right.
Is, is able to abide, areas is required to abide by this agreement.
I don't know how old the Johansons are, but they look my age and I would think it'd be whole of us to have it recorded in Minnesota, so that there'd be no questions asked if there was a repair done on the Iowa main.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Yep, exactly right.
So do I have a second on the motion to approve the agreement with the stipulation that it gets recorded in Minnesota? You gonna take care of that, Dan? You gonna take care of that, Dan?
Uh, no.
Who's gonna, who's gonna take care of getting it recorded in Minnesota? Yeah, just as long as somebody.
As long as it gets done, whatever, however it happens, we'll figure it out.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
Do I have a second? I'll second the motion. Well, any more discussion on it? Do a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Casey.
Yes.
Pla.
Yes.
Pla.
Yes.
Jerks.
Yes. Next, we have to approve the contract for DD sixty seven improvement project. No changes? Dan?
Nope, no changes.
Do I have a motion to approve the contract?
So moved.
I motion by Stecker, I got a second. Do I have a second to approve the contract for DD sixty seven? I'll move to approve, our second. Do a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Casey.
Yeah.
Pla.
Yes.
Pla.
Yes.
Jerks.
Yes. We're done then, Dan, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thanks, Dan. Talk to you later.
Have a letter to be sent to three. Oh, sure, do you want me to sign it right now?
This is, this is the. I made them.
You want it on the copy?
Yeah.
Yeah, she signs it.
Yeah.
So that we can get it sent to Minnesota.
You can get a better picture over there. Yeah, definitely looks like they're.
Thank you, Marge. Appreciate it. Judy, we're up to three letters.
Yes, you know, last fall when we sent out the, um, when, when the letters and the exemption applications were sent out to the SLU bill. There was a letter included from the border supervisors, um, regarding, um, you know, we had some misuseage of our SLU exemptions last year. And just to kind of give them, um, a warning that there's a one-time written notice to the landowners participate in this. If they failure to, um, abide by the guidelines on it. Um, so we had done, um, I had viewed all the SLU bills, um, either by Ariel or we did drive by discovery or who has his capabilities, uh, the technology. Um, we have discovered that, uh, there is three um, applications that were in the open prairie and, um, it appears to be that there was bailing done, they were mowed and they were bailed. Um, so therefore that's economic gain and that is prohibited on open prairie. So, um, I had, uh, there should be, uh, example of the letter in the packet. Um, of what, um, will be sent if approved by you. Um, and I believe you have the three Aerials of the three landowners. Um, approval of this letter being sent, uh, we were gonna allow them twenty days to, which is, that's kind of common when you deny somebody, give them twenty days to appeal it. Uh, to appeal it, come in and talk to us, or we have proof of our aerial result. I guess I just need, uh, the approval from U.S. Supervisors if, and so, you know, the approval to send these letters out as you make your call of two.
You have food plot on your open prairie? Do you have food plots on your open prairie?
Well. Actually, it's not open, uh, you know, you really probably shouldn't.
So that's clearly a food plot.
I, I know, there's, uh, and we have another one, um. But they're definitely, we were going more by, it was being bailed. So. You want the names? It is the one letter as you below, um. Do, do they have the names? Okay, okay. Um, so the, um, one letter will go to, uh, Joseph and Kendrick Deegan. Uh, one letter's gonna go to, uh, Lawrence Kirsch Trust, and the other one is John Peck. And so then if, I, I guess I need the guidance, yeah, um. If, if we are gonna deny him, uh, like John Peck's land over there that is completely exempt, are we just going to change the period that he bailed or deny all of it? Do I, do you want me to come back in after the twenty days to see if they appeal it?
I probably think that's the best idea. See if they appeal it or not, and then, then we'll address that then. Yeah, so you need a motion for us to have the three letters sent out.
Cause it's coming from the supervisor.
Yep. Do I have a motion to that effect? So, motion by Pla, second by Casey. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, post, motion carried. Thank you, Judy.
One too, I was just gonna bring up, there was one that we could see in an open prairie area that, um, it was kind of cleaned out, kind of not really open prairie, but I actually checked with the landlord and he had a severe uh, bolt vessel problem, and so he's trying to, uh, he has cut those down, spray it down. Um, so we will, I, I assume that's gonna be okay for.
We measured right there.
He said he tried to do it before the week commissioner got to him.
Well, I mean, he would have had to do that if we had got to him anyway, so.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, I told him I, I thought that would be okay. All right. We will go ahead and get those letters sent out today then.
Okay.
And we will allow the twenty days of them. Thank you.
You want me to sign them to catch me, or you want me to do it right now?
It, it's all if you do come in to the office or you.
Yeah, thanks, Judy. We're up to the bid for the automatic door openers in the courthouse and using ARPA funds to pay for it.
Okay, so the ARPA committee did, um, approve this. We talked about this last week. Um, the supervisor Sacker wanted, um, a second bid. So in your packets are the bid that you had before and an additional bid, uh, from Albona Glass.
So Willie, are these comparable or are they using the same?
Well, yeah, they're comparable.
Maybe use the same equipment? Do you see any differences? What's that?
It's not apples for apples. You got two different products there.
Okay, that's what we need to know. What, so can you explain a little bit? What's it?
I didn't look that close at it. I just, my question is to you, if we're gonna jump around company to company to company over a thousand dollars, you're not gonna get nobody to come here and work. When we call up somebody and we have a problem and we stick with a contractor, there's no problem. They show up, they fix our problem, and we move on. But wanting a second bid because we just want it, that's not right.
And after the bid was already opened, that's wrong.
Well, that's the problem I have with it, in fact.
Especially when you're sitting on the board that approved it, and then we go somewhere else.
My problem is our property approved it. Well, shouldn't we have approved it then? Cause the ARPA board approved it. They sent it to us with that company's name on it. But they're the ones that should ask for two bids, not us.
Well, I just don't think it's kosher that one individual goes out talks to one company and gets a, or after the other quotes already been opened, it's me.
I never, I never told them the price. If you guys wanna imply that.
You know, you should have went to both companies instead, talked to them both instead of just one, or you should have, I don't.
We as, we as an entity should have gone to both places initially. Not me or anybody else.
You should have did it, and you should have went to the, went to talk to the, uh, custodians, everyone that are doing, not us.
That common practice for everything we do now.
Does it need to be?
I don't know. It seems like anytime we try and do something, you jump in our trap about it and go somewhere else. You do that for Doug Miller on his bids?
We take this tribe cars to one company in Algonquin. We don't get bids. Do you go to them and ask the same thing?
We've talked about getting bids on multiple things in this boardroom.
Dude, you do it. You did it here.
Haven't yet, but I will if I need to.
Oh, okay.
Long as you're consistent, that's what we're asking. This doesn't seem very consistent right now.
Haven't seen the need to in other places.
Really? Multi-million dollar graders?
I brought that up many times. That's not up to me as one individual.
So when you want us to jump from company to company, when we have an emergency, which one you want us to call and see what they say? Change tractor mechanics weekly?
I have more than one style of tractor.
You've changed in between them?
I go to whichever one I got it from.
Okay, that's all we're asking. That's what does our work here. We don't jump around. So if there's an emergency with the door, we pick up the phone call. Hey, we need you here, and they show up.
And they show.
It's new.
So you're gonna have another company come in to work where somebody else is, just because it's new? Is he gonna jump through hoops when we use the other guy for everything else?
Nope.
Have, have you tried?
Huh?
Have you tried? Have you asked, do any other repairs?
No, because we use the same guy. Are you missing the point here?
And the last job we did, we had to beg him to get the bids here on time, and it didn't happen, and then you still went back there. That's the consistency we were looking for. When we call somebody and ask for a bid, it would be nice if they get us the bid.
Well, his story doesn't quite line up with yours.
Imagine that.
Yeah, well, I, I'm gonna move that we accept the original bid that we had, that we already approved from, uh, at the right company, or American Glass, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make the motion, we accept their bid, cause I, I just, I think it was not kosher the way it all came down.
So twenty plus percent savings doesn't mean anything.
You're not comparing product to product. We just, the custodians are the ones that put the bid, got the bids, and they just told us it was not apples to apples. And there, and American Glass is the one that put the door in, I think, to be honest. And I, I just don't like the way it came down. It was already a bid that was, that was put out there, and then somebody went to another company after the fact. He got another bid, and I don't think that was right. Well, it is a bid that the ARPA committee approved.
And then, well, I believe ARPA, okay, that's all.
Do I have a second to Mr. Pla's motion? Also, Casey seconded, any more discussion on it?
So this was approved or not approved two weeks ago by this board?
I abstained, and the other two didn't want to do it, I bothered on it.
Because it wasn't on the agenda, and Kyle threw the paperwork at us, and I'm like, it ain't on the agenda, I ain't talking about.
We didn't, we didn't do anything.
Yeah, we left that part off.
So I have a motion on the floor to approve the bid from American Glass for six thousand dollars. Any more discussion? Hearing none, do a roll call vote, please.
Stecker.
No.
Casey.
Yes.
Pla.
Yes.
Pla.
Yes.
Jerks.
Yes, motion carried. Now, we have to approve the ARPA funds to pay for the door openers at the courthouse annex. Do I have a motion to that effect? Resolution, oh, I got it. Sorry. Resolution nine twenty, twenty-two oh one, is to approve the ARPA funds. So move. Motion by Pla, I'll second your motion. Any more discussion on the resolution? Hearing none, do a roll call vote, please.
Stecker.
No.
Casey.
Yes.
Pla.
Yes.
Pla.
Yes.
Jerks.
Yes. Motion carried.
So are we paying part of it out of ARPA and part out of the regular budget? There's only forty-six hundred and.
Oh, I'll, I'll change the resolution to match what the.
Up next is the budget amendment, public hearing. To set a time and date, it's, uh, October eleventh, twenty-twenty-two at eight thirty AM. Any discussion before we make a motion to have a budget amendment hearing? Seeing none, I'll make a motion that we have a budget amendment on October eleventh at eight thirty. Do I have a second? Second, second by Los, any discussion? Hearing none, do a roll call vote, please.
Stecker.
Yes.
Casey.
Yes.
Pla.
Yes.
Pla.
Yes.
Jerks.
Yes. Motion carried. In your folder, you have the transfers that were made. Everybody take a minute to look at them. Is there any questions? Seeing none, let the record show that we acknowledge the transfers. We are up to abstract or vote on the special election.
There's, there's three copies you have to sign.
After all.
Each copy, yeah. Back of them is the counts for each.
You sign them, or what?
It's only the first of all, the last ones of this year.
Are there any questions on the abstract of the vote? Not, do I have a motion to approve? So move, motion by Pla, I'll second it. Any questions or topics of discussion on the special election? Seeing none, will I have a vote? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Very unanimous.
Roger, do we need to vote on it? This is review. Doesn't say decision. It doesn't say decision, so we have to vote on it or not?
It doesn't.
Overall basis?
I don't know. Shows that we've looked at it. Ask Todd, he's the expert.
As crew come in, it's like one more legal answer, and they're fucking under their grand, they're starting flying. It's a question.
He's drilling deep.
Yeah.
Yeah. Almost down to Kyle. You're on the last page, Kyle.
Well, we go stack to the end.
Would you be all right with approving the claims for the special election, Mr. Stecker?
Yeah.
Do I have a motion to approve the claims, the amount to fourteen thousand, sixty-one dollars and twenty-nine cents? Do I have a motion to that effect? I have a motion by Stecker. Do I have a second? Second by Plath. Again, the motion is to approve the claims for the special election. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried, unanimous. We are up to public hearing, hog confinement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So not getting surveyed is verified.
We're gonna open the public.
Yeah.
Survey here once.
We just hold on and say, we need to, we need to open the hearing. We gotta open the hearing, but are you ready? We need to open the hearing before you start talking.
I have a motion by Kyle, second by Plath. Opened public hearing. All those in favor? Aye.
Yes.
Casey.
Yes.
Plats.
Yes.
Plats.
Yes.
Jerks.
Yes. Hearing's open now.
I didn't get any complaints on it. When I was up there, and I had two matrix interviews, they gave me no close water sources. There's the one Adrian. On the, I mean, you guys had still up in beyond, we're just gonna need a survey verified. Just a little over, but not, still wasn't really close to me. I didn't see it as a concern. I didn't receive any phone calls, any complaints or anything. Pretty close that one we approved up there last fall. So, just down the road, Kyle, in there.
Who's gonna own the hog? Is it this one?
It'll be the same as that thirteen, so it's the Christians and things.
Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public?
I'd move to both a hearing.
I have a motion to close public hearing. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by loss. Roll call vote, please.
Stecker.
Yes.
Casey.
Yeah.
Plats.
Yes.
Plats.
Yes.
Jerks.
Yes. Now, you're up to the decision to approve or disapprove. Do I have a motion?
I'd move to approve.
I have a motion by Mr. Stecker to approve. Do I have a second? And the resolution number is nine twenty, twenty-two oh two. I'll second Mr. Stecker's motion. Any discussion? On resolution nine twenty, twenty-two oh two? If not, I'll do a roll call vote, please.
Stecker.
Yes.
Casey.
Yeah.
Plats.
Yes.
Plats.
Yes.
Jerks.
Yes. Please. Thank you, Kristi. Up next, do I have a discussion on using all of the taped to board meetings?
No. Survey response.
Sorry about that. I got ahead of it. A discussion, the survey response on interest of petitioning Iowa Utility Board to interfere in the application permit process.
As it's like.
Interfere, intervene.
Yeah. That's my guy. Intervene, intervene, yeah. Sorry. Any discussion on this? Do you want to just have a motion to approve or? Casey, you.
Other spokesman right there, mine.
It was discussed to me still, Todd. I think you were questioning Kyle's Isaac meeting, and he brought that up, suggested that, correct?
Yep.
And I think you were wondering what they were intervening on, if you filed that. Do you want to talk about that a little bit, on what they told me down there?
So there's not any specific topic. This is a survey request from Isaac, Rachel Bennett sent it out. Any questions or whatever can be directed to her, but the executive committee would have met from, from what I understand from the email. The executive committee met to propose this question, these questions. And number eight is, there will be a cost associated with intervening, intervening, which would likely be done as a cost share among the ninety-nine counties. How likely would it be that your board supervisors would approve expenditures of funds for this purpose? And then there's answers to that. So, it's, it's basically in the conceptual phase. If, if we're in agreement to get together as a group, that's what they're looking for, is response. It's not, not set down as far as what we're after or anything that particular. It's just following through on an idea and getting responses and feedback.
Is the object of it to have all the counties having the same issues spelled out in the same setback, or what's the object of it?
Roger's question was what the goal was of it, basically. I don't, I don't know that there's anything put together that clear as far as what the intentions would be. It's looking for a response as far as whether we want to participate or not. So, I mean.
That wouldn't directly impact the motion to intervene now. They're just asking for this. Cause currently, from what we've been told, is the motion to intervene is if you need to do that, right, shortly ahead of the permitting process, is if you would need to or would like to go on the IUP to defend your ordinance or your setbacks, if you haven't done this, you can't participate.
Yeah, so from, so from what, from what I know of it, is basically the, the open door to participate in the court battle.
Right.
As by you being.
So it's not binding you to nothing. It's just giving you that opportunity, time comes if needed.
Correct, but this would be through Isaac, so it would be a collective effort. It's not going to be one individual or whatever, but we would have attorney fees and all that stuff, because our Isaac, the general counsel would not likely be the attorney on this. They do have an attorney on staff, but they would probably have a higher outside counsel. So the whole thought of that is, if you have one county doing a petition to intervene, and you spend a hundred thousand dollars, you're gonna have a hundred thousand dollar bill per county. If you do it as ninety-nine counties, you're gonna have a thousand dollars and some change for a hundred thousand dollar bill. It's a cost share effort, basically.
So it hasn't been explained to us that way, to my knowledge. It's the way that they've worded it. It's only correct me wrong, but if you choose the motion to intervene now, and there is a reason to go in front of that board, whoever has filed the motion to intervene can do a test one and use all the resources. Just the counties that have the motion to intervene. So Todd can work with Shelby County or Hancock County attorneys as one, use the resources. Is the way it speaks, by now.
Well, I think, I think there's kind of a blend of what you both are talking about. Motion to intervene is a party who is affected by any decision of a court or public body, uh, who's incapable of being protected by the actual party that's in the litigation or in the, the, venue that's deciding the case. So if you file a motion, Kusud County files a motion to intervene, and it's granted, we are a party. There's no just sitting back and waiting. And you're doing all of the work that a litigant would do in that situation. I think what Kyle was saying is that, and is there a motion to intervene already?
So Isaac has not. I don't, I don't know about the other part.
I think someone had mentioned that Shelby.
I, I believe Shelby County has, and I don't know about any other counties on their own, but this is, this is our association. This is our association trying to see what interest is to do it as a group.
And, and if that's the case, then what you were saying is accurate too. Then you can, the resources for the one attorney, uh, or group of attorneys.
Yeah, probably. I think, I think Shelby has two.
Because the arguments or the positions of the counties probably not changed.
They'd probably be similar.
Very similar. And so you can, you know, you're gonna attack that from kind of a, a group situation and lower the expense. Uh, but the reality is that if you want to do as a county, the motion to intervene, then if granted by the, is this in turn of the?
Utilities.
Utilities board, granted by the board, which is not that big of a hurdle to, to make it in. You just have to establish you know, that you're not going to be adequately represented, and you're gonna be impacted by the decision of the board. Then in that situation, you are in. Then you are right in there with everyone else making an argument. So it's, it's, it's not a standby, which is what I kind of thought you were saying, maybe. But it's, you're there, and you'd have to answer all the, the motions and file all the paperwork, representing the person who's now been, who's now intervening, the intervening party. Uh, so I mean, either way, you know, I'm saying it's whatever the board decides. But if there's, if there's an effort out there possibly to join forces, um, it might be prudent to wait to see what that yields. I'm not sure what the timeframe is.
So the, the survey response they want by tomorrow, so they gave us kind of two weeks from when it was sent out, but it was sent out after our last board meeting, and we didn't have one last week. So that's why the deadline is tomorrow. But they want a board decision as far as if we're willing to participate in spending money in this avenue.
I have a kind of hard account, stop that. Scroll through the conversation.
Necessarily, because there are some that don't have a pipeline currently that, uh, or like out of the first two, I think there's talk of a third one.
You got Wolfen there. There's Wolfen.
Yeah, if there's. Yeah, if there's, there's, that's the top of the third one. I have no idea where it's at, but.
Where's that?
They've already started their open meetings.
Where's it at?
Where's Wolf?
Not sure what county is most impacted. Um.
That's southern?
South, western, maybe. Iowa.
Take this navigator. That's, you know where that is and where Summit is.
So that's another.
And I said, I don't know if it's, if the numbers were for Summit or Summit and Navigator, but I've heard there's at least thirty some counties that are impacted by it. So, I mean, you might not get all ninety-nine and you might not get all thirty of them either, but if you have ten, it would cut your bill. Tenfold, so to speak. I mean, it's just the hypothetical, looking for a response, um.
What do you say to the people that have signed the agreement with either pipeline and accepted the money?
Doesn't matter.
You're, you're gonna spend.
This isn't, this isn't, this isn't for setbacks necessarily.
No. You're spending taxpayers' dollars on attorney's fees to fight something that they want.
Well, that's a decision we have to make.
We need to, it's catch twenty-two to me.
So, and, you know, looking at it from the standpoint of this petition, um. What the argument is, you know, the, the two prongs that you have to meet, you know, that you're gonna be impacted by the decision. And that the parties are not in a position to adequately represent our interests or how that is gonna impact us. Apparently, um. And, and we guys probably know more about this than I, but this time, uh, there's a consumer advocate role.
Oh, yeah. They talked about that and they talked about that.
All of the, the interests. And, you know, the allegation in this petition is that, uh, um. They're not in a position to, or that in group or individual is not in a position to adequately represent Harden County's interests. Uh, and that's why the motion to intervene is necessary. Uh, and so, you know, that's, that's going to be very similar. I'm sure Shelby County is very similar to that. You know, the counties that are looking at this are going to have the same type of argument that they can put in or allegations that they can put in. Um, so then the question comes down to. Do you have ninety-nine motions to intervene or do you have one or two collectively representing the, the, the total? Uh, I don't, that's, that's your decision.
And, and that.
Let them guys decide.
And that's what the executive board from ISAC is looking for a response to.
So Roger, the comment to what you said about people that have signed. Um, here's a quick map of exhibit H. Those in highlighted in red, they've filed for, um, eminent domain on the ones in white. Um, not guaranteed a hundred percent, but according to some that have signed.
Well, I know people that are.
Are you talking about a proportion of tax dollars spent to who?
Um.
Put a little red.
The red's in the middle.
Red's in the main request, yeah.
And I know there's a person sitting in there that supposedly in the white that they think that they will sign and I know they will not sign.
And I, that's why I said, that's not, I think, it's not guaranteed that the ones in white have signed, but they think that they can get it signed. So just showing you a proportion.
I think the, I think the biggest, and I don't know if Mitch, I don't, I don't know if Mitch wants to speak to this, but from what I've been told, the ones. That are not eminent domain requests maybe have answered a phone call or something to that effect where they are trying negotiations.
So, so I'm not representing Summit Carbon whatsoever, guys, but just from a. Actual, actual standpoint, the schedule H. Summit Carbon will continue to, and it's continued to work individually with landowners to acquire it right away. The schedule H filing, my understanding is it's, it's, uh, timeline based associated with the utility portals. And in order to, in order to stay on timeline with that, anyone that hasn't signed by a certain date. Uh, and it filed by county, and that's the scheduling she's referring to. So I get a little sensitive on, on the eminent domain, uh, statements mainly because. There's so many different steps, whether it's through a county board, whether it's through FIMSA who, who regulates the, um, pipeline, um, infrastructure, no matter what type of pipeline it is. That's the, the, what Summit Carbon continues to do and will continue to do is work as a plan over the basis on, on right away acquisition. So the schedule Hs are filed, more or less giving utility board an update where they're at in the acquisition process. So that's, that's like, just because the schedule H has been filed, helping to plan those, you know? Um, or it, it's not committed to each of the landowners that have not finalized their terms. And I'm not familiar with the discussion you're having or any of those details, but. My experience that you can do work with counties. But it would be fair to say today that, you know, tracks, the policies and in red do not have. That's exactly what I said, which is what I addressed to the board on the percentage of people that have, have.
So you don't have many agreements in Cassius County yet?
Yeah, we're over fifty percent of Iowa. I don't know individual county, county.
Well, it just looks like it had many yet in Cassius County.
Oh, there's certainly different, different areas that are.
Who's going on?
And this is, I don't, I don't believe this is specific to one pipeline. So this is for both. I think it actually mentions three. Did you say it had both? Yeah.
Yes, you have.
Yeah. So. I mean, it's not a, it's not a one and done thing. There, it's, it's the whole topic. It's for all that. It's trying to do it. Efficiently, so to speak. So we're not all fighting the exact same battle.
So if we vote yes, who sends us into them by four o'clock tomorrow? Tammy, though.
Well, we all, we all got the survey, believe.
And I have a question, if you don't mind asking, what is the, what's the, uh? The costs associated or trying to spread about other counties or what's the?
So the, the purpose of this, when you intervene in there, like Todd said, you'd be hiring an attorney. So if we had. One attorney or group of attorneys representing counties, like that, if it was a hundred thousand dollar bill, you split that up. Versus if it was a hundred thousand dollar bill that we had as one county. So that's, it's just attorney fee, basically, is what it would be.
Right. In, in the agenda, it looks like it's specific to survey.
So this, the survey response is responded to our state association. So we're responding.
When I was thinking survey, I was thinking like an equal boundary survey or pipelines. Survey has to do with a public. Oh, and surveys do, but I, I.
We're, we're responding to our state association, county supervisors on how we proceed forward as a group.
Okay.
Who's gonna manage? The money being spent by the attorneys? Did you make any decision on who's going to have?
The ISAC executive board would likely oversee that.
Somebody's gonna have to oversee it because you can't have an open checkbook.
It, it's not gonna be me. I know that.
So my question, Todd, is too, if we sign this today and we, and then we're only three counties that signed up for this whole thing, is there an out for us then?
I haven't read any.
So this, this is, this is not, this is not a twenty-eighty. This is not a legal document.
Just a survey might be.
If they only have a handful of counties that sign up, they're probably gonna go to those counties and say, do you want to do it as three or five or twenty or whatever? Because if the others aren't interested, they're not gonna write a check. So that's when you'd be talking twenty-eightys and whatever to sign up for this. But this is, this is just. A, a survey response to see what our feelings are.
I'll make the motion to say yes.
I'll second your motion. Um. Number five, we will say.
Which one out of the five and?
We will say yes to number five and.
Number eight is the question about cost and it's.
Well, let's go to number six.
What?
Go to number six. If we should petition, you're gonna say yes to that.
Well, yeah.
Number seven. You're gonna go on zoning and local ordinances for eminent domain.
Going local ordinance, right?
We're, we got a thing.
Think so.
I would say.
But let's get it.
Well, yeah, depends on how that works in, but.
And number eight, yeah, as far as cost.
Then it's, we would, yeah, we'd have five options.
Uh, we'd approve expenditures of funds. I'm assuming that's what you.
I would say.
So you got that. So with that, do I have a motion to approve?
And then do you want Tammy to submit the response or?
That would be, that would be her job, yes.
Yes, because it says right here, as a body. It doesn't say each one of us, because it says, but their opinion as your body, so maybe.
That would be her job.
I would say so.
Yep. So do I have a motion to approve what we just did?
I approve that.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry. Any more discussion?
Can we project?
None.
Can we project? Okay, yes. Are you gonna do a roll call or no? It's better to hold board votes in my booth.
Yeah, okay.
Number second. There's one, two, three, four, five, six options. Do you want all six of those checked or do you want just the top?
So, yes, eminent domain, uh, soil restoration.
Well, intervene, it says what reasoning to the supervisors association intervene on behalf of its membership.
So, you want to intervene in eminent domain? Think you will, yeah.
You would, wouldn't you? From the resolution, so the zoning and locals definitely, yes. And protection of landowners. That's what we're doing the resolution. It's protecting landowners, correct?
Yeah.
That's why we're putting setbacks farther for the protection. Soil restoration, there's a compaction, correct?
Yeah.
So yes, on that one. Stop pipeline. I'd say we're doing it for the protection of the landowners. So I'd say no on the stop pipeline. Wouldn't you say? And the eminent domain?
Well, I think you're against eminent domain to be used and.
Yeah.
So I think you ought to check eminent domain.
Wouldn't you say no to the stop the pipeline? Because we're up for the protection of people, correct?
Correct. You. You have people that might approve the pipeline. I don't know if you wanna.
Well, I know there's a couple signed already. I know a couple of them, but.
Well, the other, the other ones would stop it anyhow.
Yes, uh, yes.
Okay, so just the first four, yeah, okay.
Unless there's an extra, you want an X, this is other. I can't think of none.
You want to do a voice poll or a roll call?
Uh, voice.
All those in favor of what we just did, please say aye.
All right.
Post-motion carried. Thank you guys for coming in.
Yeah, thanks guys again. Check out by being, see this will be here, right?
Any more you want to take a five minute break?
Thanks.
Yep, yeah.
Stand up those. All this too, so. Before I. I get sick of some kids. I got that patch. Yeah, I got some mountain of Colorado. Figured out something. Yes. I was gonna think of, you know, you're in that yours, I saw. It's a pack work, good. So, we're sitting outside. Yeah, I haven't said extensions, shit, this is, this is not that close enough. This is the last one. And it's pretty close. I got it. I know. If you ain't here for King, we don't, you're pretty good with horses. Right. No, no, we got King, I did that, I did that year or the year. You picked it up and Rick just. He's, he's. You just chose it. I will. The term you're done for. No. Of course, I have to ask, why? At my place, if that, we got something. If you're retired. The bird of the day, there's air. The shot, I didn't see you die in here, just somebody has. I don't just tweet Donnie's and bed. Oh, is that? Oh, that's okay, yes, yeah. What's your, what's your? I'm fed up. Yeah. Look at that horse. I will, I will. That's the cut. And there it is. Now you're gonna spend that much. Well, here's my set of hookers. It's like, yeah, like, they're all playing. I, you know, much, anyway, this was counters for that machine, you know. There it is. Something too. Right now, and I just kind of believe that thing that I always like, gotta make sure that you understand. If there's going to be a crack, it be, but when you're not being taught, it's a good, and it's so good, but maybe it's even. Thank you. Well, I don't wish to, but as I said, change the, 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 exactly, you know, but not on spot, but still, you have to do your. Yes, to there, you get trapped. Still staying in the most, will be that, or so you're, you're still willing to. Otherwise, you're gonna have a loss right there.
Yeah.
Shouldn't it take you? What, actually, that, because like, right, but when you do that, it's different. She, like, what, so I just do it out here. Yeah, especially, I mean, all of a sudden, you're like, oh, you're like, I'm like, I'm like. Well, push, is that what it is? Right, I expect the semi, I hope you're. You're all. Uh, you're. Yeah, he was. Start drinking, drink the layers. You doing it? Whoa, whoa, whoa. And it's like, well, there, I mean, yeah. Whatever it is, this week, he brazen, it's loose. Say if there's no regulation, it's a harsh task.
Are you guys ready? We will reconvene and get started, our next thing on the agenda is the appropriate measures for using the owl.
We got a lot of conversations.
Charlotte to get better. To tape board meetings for personal use. We had a conversation with Christie Hartsberger from the. He had questions about whether you should be using county equipment to tape. The meetings and then not making it available for everybody.
She had questions about that?
Yes. Whether it was appropriate or not, so.
If, if the owl is hooked up to your county laptop, then it becomes public record. So if anybody asks for that recording, they have to be granted access to it.
So are you wanting access to them or what?
You're saying what she said.
Who called and asked the question?
I have a question on that, kind of related. Why can't Kusud County do like what a bagel does, and I heard they're gonna quit it, I'd be hearsay, why can't we get that put on YouTube? Because I can't come to the meeting, but I do like to hear what's going on in the county. I know they posted theirs on YouTube, and I did watch that quite often, it's a nice tool, why couldn't county do that?
You could. They're gonna quit. From what Bill told me, they're stopping.
Why?
I didn't ask why.
But you can see, like, for me, I like to watch that, and I don't do Facebook or whatever.
Yeah. The, the only thing is, you'd have to have somebody in charge of it.
If you have an IT department, so where are they doing? Pay for an IT department, you got the equipment to do, how come the meetings aren't, uh, during COVID you did that? That was awesome, a guy who worked for a living to pay your drainage district tax. That you get out of the blue, you have no clue it's coming, because you can't come to the meetings, but I'm using a wonderful day of vacation today to attend this. Great waste of vacation, isn't it? You created that meeting, every meeting, and you're mic'd up, so we can hear what the hell is going on in the county, so our tax dollars are worth. Why don't you want people to know what's going on in the county, it should be live at all times, and it should go with your records immediately. A video should be right beside that, so you can go back ten years from now and watch that meeting. You got, you got the technology, you spent how many, how much money in IT stuff? You got the infrastructure, why not use it? For the good of the constituents of the county who can't come to the meetings, that want to be informed on what's going on. Basically, it's not, it's twenty twenty two, for God's sake, it's, everybody's using it, why wouldn't you do it now?
We don't have the infrastructure to do it right now, we'd have to spend money and do it, we could.
So who was, who was making the phone call to look into this?
Oh, you can blame me, I said it wasn't right for one person to hold the. Tapes of the meetings and have it for his personal use.
So now you want access to the recordings when I couldn't use the county equipment to record it? Two months ago?
We didn't say you couldn't use the county equipment, it was gone.
Well, that's not the case.
Yes, it was the case.
It was unplugged before it disappeared.
Kyle. We were using it for EMS meetings.
That's not true.
That is true, and you're wrong. Totally.
No, I'm not.
Yes, you are.
Prove it.
No, you can't, you have to prove it because you're dead wrong. Who had it?
So who's, who's supportive of it, of recording the meetings and posting them for everyone to see?
Well, I think if you're gonna record the meeting, then it should be for everyone.
I say, I don't think we're here to decide that, I think we're here to decide if it's, if it's, if you're doing it the proper way, yes.
So, me having to buy my own owl. Then you wanna come in and put rules on it?
No, it's just not us.
Well, did you buy it, did you campaign funds about it?
I bought through my campaign to inform constituents, but it's, it's my.
Well, you said you bought, but you said you bought it.
Yeah, I put money into my campaign account to buy it.
Well, that's not your money.
What's the difference?
Well, just saying, you said you bought it, and to clarify, did you buy it with personal money or campaign money?
I don't have a problem with you recording as long as we find out it's legal for you to use the county equipment to do it.
You want me to buy a separate?
I'm not saying that, I don't care, I just wanna know if, if it's, if we're doing it, if it's right or wrong. If you are taking, everybody has access to it, but I've heard you say before, well, if I want them to have it, I'll let them have it.
If the county's doing it, they can be available for everyone. You guys have all voted against that.
Well, because it was stated that we might have to hire somebody to run the equipment, I'm not in favor of hiring more.
I volunteered to do it. Been doing it for free for the last couple of months.
Good, but you're not giving to everybody is what the point is.
Well, I don't have access to post on the county website, do I?
Well, you got access to put on Facebook, so if Mike wants to look at it on Facebook, if he was Facebook, he could be watching the meeting right now. Or that gentleman in back could be watching it right now, but you're not giving them access, so he took a day of vacation to be here. But if you had it out there for everybody. You wouldn't have to be here.
Would, would you still be here if it was on Facebook right now for this conversation?
You could watch it tonight, then you watch the meeting tonight, you don't have to watch it right now.
Right, I'd still be here today, this was, I wanna see what it's gonna take. Any signatures to make this a, so you actually videotape your meeting and do it? We need a petition, we, you know, election needs coming up here in November, be a good time to be on the ballot, but the next. Shit, what we're gonna pay, seventy five cents per thousand on the EMS deal, shit, money's no object, shit, it's all kinds of it. What we gotta do so people can be informed in the county, so it's videotaped, it's out there. It's the way for the future.
I'll tell you, that was shy of thirteen hundred bucks. But a thousand dollars wasn't a big deal this morning.
I was wondering what it takes for the people to come to the board and say, we as, the people in Kusud County would like this so we can. Access the meetings, stay informed, what we gotta do so we get videotaped, it's out there on the county website, the court out website. Like where your minutes are, meetings are, the agenda. But right beside it, if you want some video, you can read the minutes. There are a lot of things that aren't in the minutes that happen to be. But is it gonna take a petition to have the people? Signatures to have the county consider doing it themselves and put it on the website correctly? Another tool for tapping, actually, that'll write the minutes.
They're recorded.
Yeah, voice.
Yeah.
But, uh, but how do you get all that?
You can get a recording, just bring a stick and we'll give you a recording.
I've been trying to get information on drainage district for six weeks, and I can't get that yet. I've actually seen Marge as a real human being, first time I actually seen her. So I'm glad that she's a walking human being, but six weeks I haven't gotten the information on drainage district. That's a whole other ball fire, but. Well, it takes six weeks, I still haven't got it.
Any information that you need, Mark?
Well, I wanna know my bill, the drainage district's something. I want, I advise bill, how they got to that figure, no one can tell me, Ben to Nick, they can't tell me. He says he just gets numbers, but I go to the hospital to give you an optimized list, go to dentist, they tell me exactly, I go to John Deere, they tell me every goddamn piece of lint I took out of that building. What they charged, I can't, they made drainage bill, they won't even tell me, my neighbor is paying twenty dollars less than acre, and I'm trying to figure out why. It's right across the fence, same soil, man, man, and R C S, same soil, so I can't figure it out, I'm two hundred yards from the end of the sound, but why is my bill this? Nobody wants to talk about that.
Well, it all depends upon the original. Assessment schedule. DD seven.
I can't even copy that?
Oh, they don't change.
I just want a copy, I'll give her from nineteen nineteen.
It will be, it's an, it'll be an old one.
You where?
It'll be an old one.
That's fine, but it's been six weeks, and she's supposed to email me the file for six weeks, I think I'm not, absolutely not. The last time you were gone on vacation, one time you and her were at a training.
We should have.
Herble days that Tammy. Worked to go down.
Yeah, I didn't know.
Tammy, we should really have Marge in here if she's being accused.
Yeah, we've stopped and talked.
Well, she'd be accused, I talked to people in Tammy's office, took my email twice. Because I thought maybe they didn't understand my email.
I would like to have Marge in here to defend herself if you're making accusations to her about her.
Really, drainage isn't on the agenda?
No, but it's all natural, the meeting, we're videotaping, the guy could have watched him. Maybe I could have came to a meeting before I got this bill, the mail out of the blue, that I thought the topic was done maybe back in twenty seventeen. Here's twenty twenty two, and this is this couple of lives, like, bullshit. What a surprise if I'm gonna get. That's why I'm back to the videotaping is a good tool, to stay informed in the county.
Yeah, Mike.
So I remember, this is a few years back, when we passed the ATP thing. And I remember coming to the meeting, we had, I used to post it on the, on the. TV thing.
Yeah.
But, why did that?
The school used to do.
School used to do it.
School did it?
Yeah.
They also.
And they don't do that anymore.
Well, nonetheless, all in and out, I would like to see it online so I can watch it. Consider, please.
Yep, thanks, Mike.
Thank you, have a nice day.
You too.
Any more discussion?
This discussion decision would mean.
You wanna make a decision or you don't wanna make a decision today, I don't care, I think that. If you are taping a meeting and using county equipment, it should be available for everybody.
You mean have it like, they ask for it, or it's on Facebook right now, or what do you ask it, Roger?
You wanna, microphone, you wanna zoom link on our agenda so everyone can log in? Or, because that's what Clay County does, I turn it off, copy their. Agenda, it's got stuff for Zoom right at the top, and actually it has general rules for participation at top. To start off with, says you may address any item on the agenda after recognition by the chair, state your name, address, and group affiliation. If appropriate, speak clearly, may speak one time for a maximum of three minutes. Keep comments germane and refrain from personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks. Questions concerning the rules or agenda items can be directed to the audience office, and then it's got information for logging in by Zoom. And Barry has said they let members of the public talk on Zoom, any item, doesn't matter, so. You want that, so it's available for everyone?
Oh, I wouldn't want that. It'd never get done.
Because I attended a number of county board meetings, as you guys know, and. Uh, I can't say if it's a mandatory or mandatory that does, does do it, but hard county does it, they do very well, and it's, uh. Well received.
They use Zoom?
Uh, I'm not sure if it's Zoom or another platform, but, um. That's the county that I, that I spend most, most, uh, board meetings at, and it works, works well for them.
Zoom and Microsoft Teams are probably the two most common.
I think.
I think Microsoft Teams is. Cheaper?
Teams is included with our Microsoft subscription, so we all have that already.
Yeah.
But we already have a Zoom calendar, too, so. Doesn't matter.
You wanna make a decision today or think about it?
I'd make a motion to live stream our meetings and have them available for the public, for everyone.
You're gonna match you.
I don't care who.
She asked if I'm here.
She asked if I was going to or who.
Oh, she can hear.
I think it'd be better to get somebody else to it.
And the IT guy, hook it up when we start the meeting, then shut it off when we get done?
That'd be a lot more appropriate.
Man like that, I mean, so that's his.
I'd wanna, I would wanna know what this cost is and what's involved with doing it before I'd make any decision.
Well, we have an house through the county, it just disappeared.
It didn't disappear, we have it over there right now.
Uh, question on your live streaming, will that also be available for recording, like afterwards, if somebody wanted to watch it later?
Should be able to be, depends on.
I don't, I don't know technology, I'm just asking a question.
It's Zoom. It's available, yes.
I'm not sure of teams, I assume.
Teams for, teams can.
That can be, so somebody couldn't watch it, but wanted to see the meeting, could go in at that night.
Yep.
At seven o'clock and watch it.
Yep. Dan record.
IT before.
Yeah, I think we should talk to IT and get, and just see what we could all do with team. Well, let's just.
Well, I'm using Teams right now.
No, I just, but I like to talk to. Through the county, if we do it through the IT, the county would be paying for it, so, well, we just table it and till, put it on for next week and have Derek. Give us some information with the costs.
There's no extra cost associated with it.
I'd like to hear that from my.
Well, I, I wanna talk, I'd like to hear that from my team.
If, the only thing I had to buy was the owl.
Yeah, but that's your personal, this will be going through the county, so does it gonna cost a little bit of money?
We already have the owl, that's my point.
Do I have a second to Kyle's motion? Again, I'll ask if there are a second, if not, it'll die for lack of a second. It died for lack of a second.
I make a motion to talk to our T guy and put it on the schedule for next week, and then we can find out what the price is and what it's gonna cost us.
We, we don't need a motion, we'll just put it on the agenda for next week.
Alright. That would settle my tone.
Go ahead and find out what it's gonna cost us to, so the public can have access to it. Because every time somebody talks, it zooms to that person, right, so.
They can, it adjusts and focuses.
Mitch talks, it's pointing at him, and if I talk, it's zooming right in there.
If he's close enough.
That's, that's standard with the owl, if, it depends on how well it picks up your voice, once it picks the direction of your voice, it will focus that way.
Because I never see no lights changing on that one, that's why I didn't know if it did that or not.
That's all, the lights don't change, it's all on.
Our next thing on the agenda is a policy for the authority of the board chair. I haven't looked into anything yet, do you want a policy for the board chair, his authority to run the meeting? Mr. Stecker has questioned some of the authority of the chair at times, so do you want a written policy?
What do you mean, I had questions on that?
It's.
What question, what question specifically?
By being elected the chairman of the board, you have full, full authority to. Run the meeting as, as your, at your discretion.
What authority did I question?
Do you want a written policy, I'm asking the rest of the board.
Is there something in the code that says what your authority is? What's the laws, Todd, or no?
If you can, you gotta law enforcement rule the board.
Right.
I'm asking what I'm being, what I'm being accused of.
You wanna follow Robin's rule of order, I guess, is the question.
Well, didn't seem to, last meeting when I made a motion to approve the, um. Proclamation for National Voter Registration Month, you ignored my motion and accepted Galen's specifically asking to make a motion after that, so. Do we need a policy? The proclamation for National Voter Registration Month, I made a motion to approve and Roger specifically asked you to make a motion to approve and ignore mine.
Second it?
No.
If you want to make a motion, why didn't you second it, was that important?
The proclamation isn't that important to me, it was the, the principle of the fact that I made a motion and it was ignored. But I didn't fight it when the minutes came around, didn't seem like that big of a deal, but you're accusing me of challenging the authority's chairs. And I haven't got an answer in that regard, so I'm waiting.
I don't know, I mean, maybe I'm speaking out of place here, but you, in the last twenty minutes, you've been arguing with the chair quite a bit. I don't think it's funny, you wanna snicker, go in the other room and snicker.
You think I've been arguing with the chair on what?
Well, you're racist, I said, that's the way I feel, to me, it looks like you're arguing with our chair. You can ask the other two and see how they feel, but that's my opinion, you're arguing with them, so maybe we should have some rules, uh, if you got a problem. Put something down and let's figure it out.
I still haven't gotten the answer of what I'm being accused of.
Your attitude is kinda stinks at times, Kyle.
Do you really want me to respond to that?
I don't care.
Well, I think having a board chair who says it's, thinks it's funny to vote against someone, even though he agrees with them for the fun of it. And all that stuff, I think that's a little inappropriate too.
Vote against him?
That's not a today conversation.
You brought it up, you brought it up.
No, it, it's not a vote from today.
Thanks, all I've been hearing is you making motions and the chair has been seconding them. That's what I'm curious, what you made that comment for, because he's been second in everything. I'm lost.
Yeah, that's not from today.
My question is, does the board want to follow Robert's rules of order?
Yeah, yes, I think, I think we should.
Okay.
Well, if we're following Robert's rules of order, I believe the chair is ineligible to make motions, which is not the way we've been operating meetings.
Yeah, I don't think Robert's rules of order says that you can't make a motion as a chair.
I believe it does.
I think you're wrong, we will look it up though.
Just what I've been told.
Do we need a motion to follow Robert's rules of order or can it?
Or can we get a copy of it, or what, the actual, do they have a section in there for the board chair? Yeah, we'll all take a look at them before we make a decision.
Yeah.
Instead of a book, just like trying to figure out all everything.
I got a book laying there.
Sure.
Our next thing. Policy of animals allowed in the Corning County courthouse.
Okay, so, um, this has come to my attention a couple of different times. Especially lately, we've had dogs in the courthouse, not on leashes. And our, our custodial staff. Was scared, um, as the dog kept leaving their owners' front towards them. The dog never did have contact with her, but, um. She was afraid for her safety and other people's safety, you know, last week it was a surprise when a Great Dane walked out of an elevator. Unleashed, so, um, it was brought up that maybe that's something they wanted to look into.
So that's my experience.
I got a buddy that's got a service dog and to actually have a certified service dog, when you're out in service, it should have a vest stating such. You also carry a card with the dog's picture and the handler. So for someone to say my service dog is a training is inaccurate.
I, I don't know anything about that, but in here in the A D A stuff, it says they're not required to be certified or go through a training program. And they're not required to wear a vest or I D. Um, I thought somewhere it said you can't even ask that.
Yeah, it does say that.
You can ask if they're a service dog. You can't ask, yeah, if you go to, um.
In, in here.
You may ask two, two simple questions, is the dog a service animal required because of the disability?
Yeah.
And what work or task has the dog been trained for, or you cannot ask them to perform those tasks, you cannot ask for registration.
Documentation, yep.
Dogs, if the city. Requires registration and vaccination, service dogs are included. I mean, if, if they have to prove registration, if required, I don't think that one requires registration, but. They used to require vaccinations, although I'm not sure if that's required now or not, rabies, that type of thing. Because that's across all broad, the, the broad category of dogs, you know, in order to have a dog in the city. Um, but yeah, and the A D A doesn't require any, as a matter of fact, you don't have to have any documentation of training. Or certification, because it's, you can't even mandate registration, because that's a violation of the A D A, involuntary. And they're not required to, uh, show that they're a service dog, so at least under the A D A. Um, but I think the question in general is, you know, the, does the board want to have a policy in place regarding? The service dog is required to be under control. That under control does mean harness, leash or tethered. Unless the service dog is required to perform tasks that that would not, that would not lend itself to. So for instance, if the dog is trained to fetch something for the person, say the person is in a wheelchair, then it can't be tethered, it can't be in harness. But they still have to be under control. Um, and so, you know, in that type of situation, you know, I think if you had a policy, um. That any animal or any dog has to be leashed unless. You know, it's required for a pass that's. Dependent upon a person's disability, I think you're fine. You know, I, I, I guess I, I didn't, it always occurred until it was brought to my attention too. And so I looked into it and, and I think we'd be well within our right to do so. Um, again, looking at from the protection of other courthouse visitors. Uh, but, uh, yeah, be a little bit careful with that, because your service animals are. Category for disabilities that, uh, you can't legislate or. A policy for that process.
Did you read Scott's county's?
I did, uh, I don't know about the initial words. I don't know what I seen from, but, uh, uh, you know, I, I, I thought it was a big policy. I might to explore it more, cause I didn't have a lot of time to get into it with some of the other things I've been doing. Uh, but, uh, um, yeah, the city look can be. Very, excluding this.
I need you to review it and bring up a policy activated through Simpson County.
So yeah, if you would like to.
Yes, yep, but it's okay, put that on the agenda. If you can't get it done, we can do it for next week, please.
Well, I just was informed that there's a, a new ordinance I need to review on the earlier discussions, so. But I'll, I'll, I'll make, uh, uh, try to get that.
Thank you, Todd. Anything else on the subject? Then we're up to Doug.
Good morning.
Federal eight agreement.
Um, we possibly, we have some of our renters here that have been here for a while. So, uh, like to, if we could, just move that ahead.
Yeah.
And take care of the other business after that. Um. I have Zach Nielsen. Zach. Uh, Cody Dornbeer and, uh. McNeese, Greg McNeese here, uh, they, uh, are current tenants on agricultural land. Uh, what we call Montague one, which is Greg, Montague two, which is Zach, and the Hutchins. Yeah, which is all, uh. Pasture, which Cody has, um. We spoke a little bit, the board asked and, uh, the tenants coming in to discuss this. I included in your electronic folders, uh, current rent and then some. Uh, aerial photographs of the land that they rent, so, uh, we had. Some, uh, gentleman in earlier, some of our tenants, we got some, uh, new rent established with them, so. I'll ask the board, I'll let the board ask questions about. About the pins. One thing I will say, Cody, this is, this was transferred from Rick Thompson. Uh, it's all pasture, uh, Cody's had it for one year and I think Cody, uh. Has expressed interest, but he would like to discuss fencing options, because we do have a fence issue. But, uh, leave some questions to you guys there.
The tree's not the fence down. In there?
The, the rust, the fence down?
Yeah. It isn't much.
No, it's just, I mean, it's a, it's a liability right now, you got, I mean, you have to do something with it. In my opinion, I, I mean, I wanna, I wanna utilize it, I wanna get something agreed upon that, that we all think it's fair. To get the fence up to, up to snuff, so it's not a liability, especially on the, so like Rick on the north end. He actually ran like, uh. Just like kind of temporary wire about two thirds of the way from the south. He hasn't even utilized the north end of that pasture, because he, he just doesn't want the animals that close to eighteen with the shape of the fence that it's in. So I mean, currently it's, so I get two thirds, fifty, forty acres, fifty acres of the sixty-eight dudes.
So what's your idea along the pavement?
He just needs to fence.
Yeah.
You know, and. Just something that's fair, I, I mean, I don't wanna go stick ten thousand dollars for the fence in and then next year, well, we're gonna give to this guy now. Like that, or, or you stick ten thousand dollars for the fence and it has to be all my expense and then next year, it's, well, I'm gonna raise the rent to. Ten thousand bucks for the, you know, whatever, just, just get something set that everybody's happy with to make sense both ways.
Along the lease, would you need to put a good fence in?
I don't know, I mean, it's a sixty-eight hundred linear feet to do, to go all the way around the outside, roughly. So I mean, it's gonna run you, like if you hired somebody to come and do that, it's gonna run you twelve thousand bucks practically just to throw. You know, there's a lot of the posts, like steel posts are already there, so you can reuse the steels. But then it's a question of are you gonna go in and tear out all the old stuff? Everything new in on the property line, are you gonna set the new, you know, two foot in from the old? You know, the problem of that is it's woven wire, a bunch of broken barbed wire and there's a lot of deer there, so every time a deer crosses the street, they open that and shoot them. It, uh, you, you know, you got a chance of that wire getting kicked out, the new wire, shorten it out, then you got a shorter fence and you're back to, uh, a liability.
So your idea is to put a twenty-eight inch woven wire and three barbed wires or something?
Well, no, it'd just be like smooth. One strand of barb, a couple of spoons or high tensile, I mean, that's what I just guess, gotta feel how you guys want it.
So it'll be electric fence?
Correct. Be personally, I think everything should be electric.
You'll have to tear the old stuff out of there, won't you?
So there's piles of junk there already, that's another question that I have, I mean, you know, I, I guess I got the equipment to pull and clean stuff up. That doesn't bother me to go in and do some work, as long as it's mutually beneficial. And there's, there's some junk good stuff sitting in there, I don't know where it came from, it's probably been there for a hundred years, whatever, but.
What's the current rent?
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred a year, I think it's, yeah.
So if we left it at fifteen hundred a year for three years, you, you'd be satisfied to do a little work on the fence or?
No.
No?
No, I mean, three years doesn't, you know, if, if I gotta do, if I'm putting all the money into it, I mean, like I said, it's. Could be ten, twelve thousand bucks to, to fence that, so. So you figure that into a three-year rent with the, with forty-five hundred, yeah, forty-five hundred on top of that, so you're talking sixteen thousand bucks, I mean. So it's pretty high pasture, especially on gravel. So, you know, I, I don't know how far you guys willing to go out, how you guys, I mean, I, I don't know any of what you guys, how you're willing to do anything. If the county's willing to put up some of the money to, to do it, or it's all on the tenant, or I have no idea.
It's right along the highway.
Yeah, north end.
Going in, then the south end is right on Old Eighteen, on Old Eighteen and there's gravel tracks run through.
Where's my neighbor?
Well, no, they're not neighbor, on the east, east and west side, yeah. The west side is east, west is guys, you know, and that's just the old gravel pit.
Yeah.
Who's on the east, it's, uh, Michael Dalton or, you know, and that's just pasture, it's all that's, that's gravel.
This isn't law, so the east and west side, if you got a neighbor, isn't the law that if you stand in the middle of the?
Right hand rule, yeah. I mean, yeah, that, that is true.
So you'd only have to pay for half the east, half the west and all the north and south?
Correct, that would be the, I mean, that's, that's the old rule. You go tell your neighbor that you wanna put in a new fence and for cattle and he's gonna pay for half, that, that usually doesn't go so well.
Yep, so I got tongue chip trustees to solve the war. We don't get involved in that. So what's your idea?
Well, I mean, that's like I said, I mean, does the county pay, what, does the county will to do that, or they pay for any of it, or they all on dependent? You know, I guess, uh, this kind of, it's all new to me, so. Give me some ideas, I can put some stuff together of what, you know, what works. Basically, at the end of the day, it just has to be an agreement long enough to cut, if I'm gonna cover all the expenses. That once all this, you know, the total cost of rent, fence, everything divided out over the years makes sense on the, on the dollars per acre on pasture. That's what I'm looking at.
Doug, is there any gravel left in there?
Uh, on the north end, there is.
There is?
Um. I've been told, I mean, but it's. It's pretty much exhausted, there's, I mean, there's sand underneath of it, that if we would ever get to a point where we need to. Uh, mix in some coarser aggregate, crush it all together, then use that sand and, and minus two hundred to use for binder. But, uh, up on the north end, I've been told there is maybe fifteen thousand.
Any clay or anything that we could use out of there?
Uh.
Basically.
I, I haven't been, I don't know, recently. For, I think a lot of it is just sand, you know, uncut, or whatever you wanna call cover, stripping, different things. We, I mean, we've used it over, we've hauled it north, uh, up to, uh, to Pimp and Zach. And we've mixed it in, cause we get some really coarse material. Um, I mean, we've utilized material out of it before.
My, I guess my question is, we don't wanna get rid of it.
They just sell it?
Yeah, if there's gravel in there yet, but there wasn't any gravel, I don't.
I'd rather get that, go in there and try and get that gravel out of that north end before we try to sell it.
Would that be an option to solve the fence problem?
Uh, obviously, yeah, and, and that was kind of my other thought too, if it's no use to you guys, Rick said somebody, you guys are gonna go in there like. Four, five years ago, pull something out and it never ended up happening.
We, I mean, we got some, got some sand out of it, right, went north.
I mean, if I was near, she was gonna just run the numbers here, I'd love one at least a ten-year.
That's, I mean, yeah, you started doing math on it, and, and I mean, I can get some quotes from some guys on what it, you know, what actual price would be to refence the whole thing. But, yeah, I mean, you, you do the math, it, it'd come up to like ten years, very...
Would it be cheaper, you leave the old fence, or just put the other one about a foot inside?
It would be a little bit cheaper. The problem you get, like I said, when the deer come through, well, they have two fences to jump, and if they can't make that five-foot gap, they're gonna land on one of them. If they're coming in, they'll drag the old wire into the new wire, and then it shorts out, and then you got a problem, yeah.
Yeah, I'd rather see just one for you.
That's what I mean, and, you know, there's trees that are growing up in the fence line that, you know, it really shouldn't be ripped out, 'cause like there's, there's wire stapled to trees, insulators on trees and stuff, it's...
So how big an area you think's got gravel on it yet, Doug?
Oh, it's up on that north end, you know, there's really not a lot of patch that up on that, well, no, it's two ponds up there, right, and, and it's to the east of that on, that's on the north.
Could we take the fence around that area in case we'd ever wanna?
And you could, 'cause that's kind of actually how Rick had it now, like that he just pounded some posts in and put some aluminum, you know, fourteen gauge, and struck it across there, he basically sectioned that north ponds off, uh, is, is the way it's set up now, and, and then probably, I didn't do the, I did the acres on that, that probably comes out to somewhere around like forty acres, I would imagine that. Is that south, forty-five, is it sixty-four, right, total?
Thirty-seven, eight, nine on the top, and twenty-eight on the bottoms.
Fifty-six, yeah, I guess, yeah, so, so, but yeah, probably about forty acres what he's got sectioned up.
Anybody got any really good ideas? Kinda like to see it utilized, but...
Well, it's, I mean, it's not utilized, it's pasture, you know, it's nice pasture, but when it's a liability, I mean, you have, if something get out on the blacktop, that weighs fifteen hundred pounds to get smoked in the middle of the night, it's, I think, so good for more.
Renting them off too much, I don't, what do you guys think?
Well, I think you gotta give me the, the long-term lease, or you gotta pay for part of the fencing, or just let it go, or not even rent it out or something, I mean...
Yeah, we got about three choices.
Well, why don't we just leave it? Cody and I'll continue to visit.
I can show you some office prices and stuff, so you can...
Yeah, maybe if you get some prices with some fencing, um... And, uh...
'Cause I know Rick had an issue with keeping some cattle in there, too, but it's just, it's not...
Yeah, as far as McNeese's, you farm there?
He got three acres.
Yeah, so you ain't got much there to talk about, I didn't think.
No, it, it's not, um, that, all of that area, the gravel has been exhausted out of there for quite a few years, we haven't been in there a long time.
So you're charging him big rent for those three acres?
Twenty-five bucks an acre.
He's got a lot of money, you know?
Exactly, yes, but it was grand, so I'm in with Montague, I guess.
Yeah, somehow on that.
Years back, it was a handshake or greenware or something, and then bought the farm from him, and then the one it's been. But it's just a little odd shape thing, whatever, so I mean, don't love too much.
You wanna change it or leave it like it is?
Is that one that we could sell?
I would have no objection to that, all people.
It's, I mean, twenty-five bucks an acre is nothing, but if we're, if we got our gravel out of it already...
Of the three acres of the old pit?
It would be the whole, it would be everything.
Five acres, yes, I was gonna mention that.
There's...
We have talked with Ty a little bit to verify that it's going to be...
Cause you got pretty good...
I mean, we own it by deed.
Yeah, you got pretty good sites, fit there.
Uh, it's twenty acres total.
Yeah.
And it's a twenty, twenty-acre parcel, somehow there's some gravel. You own all the property to the west and to the north.
Right.
Correct?
Right, still. Well, your three acres of crop land is on the north side.
Right, yeah, but you, you own between two hundred and forty is three acres, whatever.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So, there was a little bit of gravel that was actually taken out, uh, there's like, you know, a little pond there that's almost like... Would you like me to visit with Todd about advertising that? Okay, I will keep visiting with Greg.
Then the other one?
Uh, the Montague Two pit?
Yeah.
We share crop, one-third. I don't know, your father, as long as I've been with it, they harvest, haul it to the, haul it to the yard, uh, elevator, call us up, tell them we got so many bushel of beans or corn, um, last couple of years, it's amounted to about four thousand dollars per year, approximately.
It's not real great ground?
Absolutely, what's still more right now is about twenty-one acres.
Yeah, I believe so.
Cause we took some, and get out of that east side.
Twenty is two hundred bucks an acre, so that's...
So I think that, I think what we have on that pit is pretty fair.
And it's still, it's still share crop, right?
Yeah.
It's still share crop. We farm right to the north of it, but that's later, so we just get to the, oh, just seal and harvest that, so, you know.
Yeah, it works out really well.
I see no reason to change.
Yeah, I would leave that, my goodness.
If you're good.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Well, we will get a lease back to, hopefully, there, and try and get this stuff, put out a solution. Yeah. Great, we'll keep on, you know, there.
Solve them, that's, it's a good one, that. It's an excuse to go by.
You know, it's kind of like my wife fishing, she says, there's an excuse to get any cover, but... All right, but thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good, safe harvest.
No.
I was gonna give you a hard time, Doug, you didn't plan four-way bridge very good, 'cause when Bagel County's putting the bridge in, just do the...
No, that's, they didn't plan.
They didn't plan, okay.
I got a question for you, I heard somebody made a comment that the one-six, one-sixty-nine bridge has been... More as condemned, or they did pass inspection, they gotta start all over again? Do you know anything about that?
I just visited last week with the construction engineer in Mesa City, and he said that everything's gonna be finished in, last week was four weeks.
I just heard that yesterday.
I have not heard that.
Guy was saying that he got, somebody said the one-sixty-nine bridge didn't pass inspection, they're gonna have, now they don't know when they're gonna get it done, 'cause they can't get new, new, uh, violins and stuff into...
Boy, I, I find that hard to believe.
Well, I did too, but that's just not, that's what...
Especially piling, if, if there was an issue with piling, they would have taken care of it.
Yeah.
They couldn't get the I-beam last time.
Yeah, and the I-beams were all inspected, I, I find that hard to believe.
That's just, that was just, I thought, I just thought of that, I heard that rumor last night.
No, I, I haven't heard that.
Okay, those...
I will call, uh, construction, and let you know what I...
Yeah, I just hope, I mean, that'll be closed for another ten months, twelve months, be closed all winter. Till next spring, yeah.
What are those narrow pieces for that four-way bridge way? Pretty heavy.
Less than fifteen tons.
Let's see, 'cause last week and the week before, they've been running by the farm.
Yeah.
Three semis, always following each other, and they each got one piece on there, seven.
Right, yeah.
Figured that's what they were having, was the four-way.
Yes.
It's their smart, such a bypass, instead of going through everything, or, uh, going on...
Okay, uh, would you like to act on the Houston Federal Agreement?
Correct.
For the roads? This is our standard federal aid agreement with the county highway bridge program. Uh, this will be one hundred percent federally funded now. Um, I thought it was a eighty-twenty, but it's actually eighty percent HPP and twenty percent swap. So, uh, but this is, uh, the agreement between the Iowa Department of Transportation and the Kusuk County to, uh, replace that bridge. And this would be, uh, on the west line of Section sixteen of Westland Township.
Okay. I would make the motion to approve Brick Swap Program. Do I have a second? Second by Plah, any discussion? Roll call vote on it?
Stecker?
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
Los?
Yes.
Plah?
Yes.
Jark?
Yes.
I got two of these, just in case. All right. Thank you. Okay, then, uh, the next piece, uh, is Whitmore, if you remember. Whitmore Mayor Dan Albert Stewart signed somewhere in six weeks ago. Um, Whitmore, the population dropped to low five hundred, uh, which transferred, automatically transferred jurisdiction from their jurisdiction of their farm to market, extension roads, the roads that are farm-to-market in Whitmore, uh, transferred jurisdiction to the counties. Whitmore, um, opted to keep the money and maintain all construction, maintenance, all the responsibilities...
It's normal to, right?
For the trade of those dollars. Snow removal, signs, all of them that were on the map, to any change, uh, for returning the, uh, road use tax that the county would be receiving. Uh, we have received their signed agreement from Whitmore, so this would be a motion to approve the twenty-eighty agreement with Whitmore, and take care of all of the responsibilities asked outlined in the agreement.
Thank you, motion.
I have a motion by Casey, and I got a second by Los.
Sure.
Any discussion? As prepared, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried unanimously.
Roger and Tam, on the bottom.
Roger on the top.
Understanding why they wanted to do that.
Why?
Yeah.
No.
Good. It don't make any sense to me.
The dollars.
It's kind of, I, I don't see, not always for something, it's, I know Whitmore, uh, they, they do a good job in their town. I'm sure they'll continue that. Okay. Construction in the road right away. Do you have a request from Iowa Lakes Electric Cooperative to... They are upgrading some lines up in Four Eightieth, it's Four Seventy, Four Sixty Street, Two Hundred Twentieth Avenue. Uh, they need to plow some, uh, some electric lines in our road right away, and they also are boring a couple of locations. This is all an upgrade, and I would recommend that the board would go ahead and approve of this request, uh, zero-nine-thirty, twenty-twenty-two.
I have a motion to approve, number zero-nine-thirty, twenty-twenty-two.
I'd make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Mr. Stecker. We have a second. Second, second by Plah, any discussion? A vote in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, five to zero.
Get you to sign, it's right there, please.
There are more signatures, you had more things on there?
Uh, no, I think I'm just kind of tying everything up here as they get signed. Uh, we also have a request, uh, from Brent Murphy. Uh, Brent would like to install an eighteen-inch corrugated metal pipe uh, for the prop, uh, purpose of transporting hog manure under One Hundred and Seventy-Five Avenue. This is approximately thirteen-hundred fifty feet south of Two Hundred Seventieth Street. Um, if you go north there, Two Hundred Seventieth Street, One Hundred Seventy-Fifth Avenue, there is a findment, uh, that Mr. Murphy, uh, is the owner of. He would be applying, uh, applying that manure to the camp, farms, there's floor and facilities there. Uh, this was a pipe, we've done this with other owners, we have the policy. The applicant pays for the metal pipe, the county puts it in for free. We place it six, eight inches above, uh, the ditch bottom, so it doesn't seal the inner anything, or it doesn't convey any water across the road. So, uh, we've done this before, this helps a lot with the, the application of manure, doesn't tear up our roads, and they would be, uh, using manure all equipped. So I, I'm in favor of this, recommend that the board would approve of this request.
I like the motion. Motion by Casey, I'll second your motion. All votes in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
May, motion carried, five to zero.
Your signature on this. Uh, then, the last thing for... The last thing for construction in the road right away. We do have some plans here, this would be for that state bridge, we just made the agreement on. Um, if the board would sign those, we'd be able to get that ready for that. So just let them pass it down, please.
They even working on my bridge?
What's that?
Are they even working on my bridge? Quiet down there.
Down in our office?
Irvington Bridge.
They're pouring today, yeah.
Well, they're pouring today.
Somebody said that. Yes. They were driving some highway yesterday.
My neighbor. We watched him do a lot of work on that Big Six Bridge. He said that crew wants to. He said, I went down there, we just watched them pull the copper dam up. That guy don't know how to run a train.
Oh, yeah? Um, no, they're slow. I, I actually, I called him up. Left to. Express my uh, concern that. It wasn't coming along real quick.
What's the devil on the bridge?
I. I think we have a number of working days. And they're about seventy percent. The working days have been used, and they only got.
On that bridge?
Yeah. And then we only got about twenty-five percent of the bridge. They have a lot of work.
So you're, you're thinking not before winter, then they're gonna be done?
They keep on saying they're up for November. Yeah. But tell me that.
Which deck on a different bridge is that one?
This one here.
I can say that too, Doug.
Right. I need my notes, make sure that I got it. Okay, uh, that is all the work in the road right away.
You know, any by chance, is Midland ever gonna get that pole on there?
I gotta call Chad. Uh, I should I think about that over the weekend, I'll call him.
Cause I know that, with that working on that bridge. They come through Irvington. And then they turn that corner so that they can back down that hill. And they hook that guide wire, you can see how the guide wire is bent, somebody's trying to make that.
Okay. I, I gotta.
With that.
Just it hasn't been done.
So I just know it's been a lot handy for the one they're doing that bridge, for them guys to whip around that corner.
They're putting a box cover down on eight forty-two. Around the bridge.
And yes, I do have some photographs of that.
Are they all the same grade? We can't tell by the photo.
No, the, the bottom two are lower. Can, there'll be two lines on the outside, one on each side of that. So they'll be two feet higher on the outside.
So there's water in that middle section in the photo?
Yeah, it's ponding there, there's no water. They, they have all that bottom, or that uh. Those two bottom ones there.
It's kinda hard to tell.
Yeah.
The creek ain't even running, is it?
Oh, yeah, there's water in there.
So the guy in the water creek ain't running, it's just standstill.
They're, I mean. They got all that running through about a thirty-inch pipe, and you can see the flow.
Also, they got a culvert land in there?
They got, yeah, they have a crossing there, and they've got it on the, could be the northwest side. There's a channel that's carrying water from one side to the other.
So they left all the old piling in?
Uh, they tore out the old piling, it's actually uh, city. But the outside sections will be. Bearing on where that land was at the pilots were sitting on, so those are out. And they gotta take, they might have to remove some on that northwest side. By the end of this week, they should have the two centers and the southeast taken care of, and then. Uh, they gotta do their work to get some stream work done. So two weeks or so, that'll be up and going.
So where do you get the backfill for that?
We got a borrow deal. If you go west of Tyke, right on the pavement, there's some pasture in there, I can't remember the owners, but we got an agreement. To go in there and get some borrow. It's gonna take quite a bit.
Yeah.
But it'll, it'll be close, and we'll, we'll get on it.
You can also understand where there's a pond, there's no.
So, so if this works real good, in the future, are we gonna quit building bridges?
Well. One point five million dollars.
Yeah, I know.
You could probably build a bridge if the, if it wasn't so wide.
Yeah, wouldn't be that much money though, would it?
For a bridge?
Yeah.
Yeah, if we just build a thirty, thirty-foot bridge over that, you're looking at.
Five hundred?
I would, I would say under five hundred thousand. But that was so wide. That, that presented the challenge. When it's all said and done, I'm, I'm really optimistic that.
Yeah.
The traffic. The people using it. Will be very, very satisfied with the, with the outcomes.
I hope so.
Uh, patching, I, if anyone's been up north, Highway Nine, I did receive actually some comments from the public. But we have railroad crossings that were on the pavement, we've got those patched up now, and I think that turned out pretty well. The Fairville Road, everything is shouldered there. Uh, all that is needed to be done is seated, seating and traffic control. The Irvington Bridge, we've cut that a little bit, it's going slow. Four-way bridge revisited about, resurfacing is set up to begin next Monday. So they're supposed to be actually setting up their plant in uh. On the north side Highway eighteen right cross from our, I should say it. So that's where that asphalt will be produced in fall to. Uh, one sixty-nine bridge. In my notes I have that it should be open in three weeks, but obviously challenging on that. Seal coat work, uh, they think they're gonna be finished with seal coat work, you may have seen they did the Laverne Sexton Road. R fourteen up to B fourteen, I think is what it is. And then they're running up north to do A thirty. North of the Y, which is P fifty, I think. And we got A. A thirty which runs east-west on the north and north of nine, about six miles somewhere. Of there. That they were finishing up on. The yard wind power continues to direct uh. The, their towers, suit when they have all their concrete in now. So they, they should be moving towards the. Direction of that.
Hannah, yeah, the Hannah Ranch ground, they got three first sections.
Yeah.
For about. Shortly enough.
Right.
And I was going to farm the other day, and the guy on the, coming out of Bristol's, going into Moth uh. Bossy Farms, that'd be uh, Crowder's Ground on the Irvington block top.
Okay.
Where they're gonna cross. The head guy on the crane was there kinda scratching his head. They didn't quite make it wide enough for his big crane to get across there.
Oh, yeah.
So they brought a bunch more fill. What did he do? They got put like three or four feet of gravel on top of the block top, and then put the wood on top of the.
So they won't damage the.
What'd he say, the crane was one point eight million pounds? The big end.
They're testing. Um, and then the last thing, uh, sewage management. We have one trailer that was damaged, and it's been brought up to Minnesota to be repaired. And then, so we were down to two trailers last week, and last week a trailer, one of the valves on it sprung a leak. So, right now, we're working with one trailer. Trailer with the valve was supposed to be repaired tomorrow. But I'm renting another walking floor trailer from a company up in Minnesota for a month, just so we can keep up with the. The refuse is being hauled in.
What happened to the long trailer?
Pardon me?
What happened, somebody hit it or?
No.
Internally?
Something to floor. Don't know, but it dented the floor.
They dropped something, dropped it in?
Some big piece of, big piece of concrete, big piece of rocks. Tried to reinforce the, the guys up there that they gotta. Gotta do some sorting, figure out, make sure that air dropping everything, but it. It was damaged, it, I don't know, it. We had talked about damage on trailers before, this was, this was much greater than anything that was before. Yeah. So. And then did receive a resignation from an operator out of the Laverne shop, Brian Wimper. And uh, he is resigning, going to be completing everything October third.
Retirement?
Resigned.
Which was young.
He's. He's young, and he's a very. Very good worker, very valuable to us as far as. Artender, plumber, those types of things. Did a lot of work back at Concrete Board. It's kind of hard. Go to guy there. And I guess pricing our guys off on sidewalk, hopefully that'll be pretty close to being there.
Anything for Doug?
Alright.
Thank you Doug.
Very good, thank you.
I'm going with you.
We're going.
We're gonna take a five minute.
And besides, I got long. Thank you.
Yes, we got a couple breaks today. How long did it take to get the signed pay out from them? Did it come in shortly after we had it last time? For most of the while?
It was, I think it was later on that week.
Yeah. Cause I see it's signed the twenty-three, but.
Of September?
That's when it's signed.
Okay, so maybe it didn't come in. Um, so. This is for that pay out. Oh, so, well, August twenty-third.
Yeah, so our meeting would have been the.
Thirty.
Six. For the first meeting.
Oh. Yeah, you might have been at the wrong calendar, okay.
Yeah, so I don't know, they forgot, put it in the mail or whatever.
Beverly, yeah. Uh, he, he had requested all of the. Records for doing the job. And I mentioned it's a larger issue. So if you want to bring in their A U S B. And so I've sent him that few things, but he came and made his list, so. I'm sending, so he narrowed it down to a smaller area because the dream started in the early nineteen hundreds.
Well.
Wow.
Yeah.
If he wants an assessment schedule, let's. Examine it.
Well, that's interesting.
You just don't hand that over.
Yeah. But I wrote down the name, so I'll send him.
Well, yeah, you don't read it anyhow.
Well, that was, that was part of the issue before, is a large. Years amount to send, it wouldn't send.
Baby got beaned. The cold count my names Friday.
Yeah, just six D five for I and Thursday.
I think what they say, down the forties Thursday night, fifties first Friday was rain, really?
Yeah.
There will be some snow yet in September. Sure.
Yeah. Bite your tongue.
Well, I thought they said we're supposed to get a heck of a lot of snow and colder than Dickens this winter. Now, this morning on the radio, they're saying.
Warm.
Warm, and now hardly no moisture, so which one we can get?
This Farmer's Almanac, which is for.
I think it's, it's, it's the other one. Almanac. I tell you, it's Farmer's Almanac, is that what they call it?
And so a lot of snow, that could be. That's what they say, they can say, you know, how random, it could be.
Anywhere.
It says.
We will call the meeting back to order. And the first thing we have on there is to appoint commissioners for DD eighty-two voluntary annex. You got a couple?
Rich Rosenmeyer and Cat Rhodey, this is Dave.
So we have Mr. Rosenmeyer and Mr. Rhodey. As commissioners, I have a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Motion by Stecker, do I have a second? Second by the plan. Any discussion? Hearing none, allored in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Discussion to hire attorney Jim Hudson Hudson to draft a policy on annexation.
Wanna talk about this?
Yeah, I think things that we have. Litigation on other annexation issues, that we should really have something. That spells out how you annex something in, and what's legal, legal or right way to annex a property into a drainage district.
But that was all. There's nothing in the code, no?
I thought that was all pretty well covered in the code, you got voluntary and involuntary annexation. Yeah.
Process and stuff is in the code, but the discussion on policy and stuff is.
Policy is when the engineers do uh. Do the lidar, they do, they come up with a watershed, and the lands that aren't in that, that, or else, that aren't in that drainage district, it should be, then they're. Annexed in, either voluntary or involuntary.
So this ties into other situations that we've come across in the past, plus could be. Plus could be presented in the future with newer technology, bigger equipment, all that stuff. You can do more than the natural course of water. The difference there is like, we had a smaller request for bringing in, I think, a couple acres on the backside of the hill. They were both bad outlets, hadn't been improved in a hundred years. And we allowed that guy to put a very small tile in just so he had access. Because the other way would have had to connect through a neighbor's property. I mean, it's. If hiring Hudson would be an effort to get our policy, procedure, expectations, all that sort of stuff in black and white. So it's crystal clear for everyone involved, landowners, supervisors, engineers. The whole nine yards.
I thought it was pretty black and white in the code. Then you'll spend, you know, spend another two, three, four, five thousand dollars to, to try to rewrite the Code of Iowa book. I mean, the Code of Iowa, the Code of Iowa supersedes anything we do in this border. There's, there's policy in the code. The only reason that you would do this would be if you split up a drainage district and take land out of it. It's not real clear how those acres can be addressed and brought into another drainage district. Other than at our discretion. Never take land out of a drainage district. Once you're in drainage district, you're always. We have, we have a situation here where there's pebble ground in the middle that isn't paying an assessment. And these acres are stranded on the bottom end with no tile outlet. It was in a drainage district, but when we redid the tile, they're gonna bring it down to them. So we can do it without.
And it also, I mean, with the other situations that we've been presented with in the last couple of years, some of that is a factor in the consideration that we should have something a little more black and white. Rather than our discretion, which can be challenged in a number of ways.
Well, you may wrap a policy, you can challenge it. Yeah, and I, I guess I don't see the value of paying Hudson thousands of dollars to write a policy. He's just gonna go to the code book anyway. It's gonna, they gonna change anything? And we, and these things that come up, these, these occasional, you, you handle those as they come up. But you're never gonna have a policy that's gonna cover all of them anyway. So you're gonna spend thousands of dollars to Jim Hudson to make a copy of the code book?
No, it, I, I mean, we could ask him what he would charge for something like this, but I don't think it'll be a substantial cost.
I, I, I'm sorry, I don't see the value like for that.
Well, we've got it, we've got a current situation involving crossing district lines that we're currently going to court over or potentially going to court over. That's one of the reasons we probably should have something in black and white. If you want to be able to defend anything.
Yeah, and I'm thinking about that too. It always ends up the judge's discretion. How she interprets all. Well, it's always. It probably is not gonna matter. It ain't gonna matter, cause they're gonna go to the, they're still gonna go to the code, the Code of Iowa's. Drainage code still gonna supersede anything we have, anything we write up in this, in this room. Mark, your opinion?
Um, I don't know.
Do any other counties around this have this? That you know?
No.
I don't think so. I've never heard of it.
It wouldn't have to be pretty, pretty wide open to cover all different types of annexation. I mean, that, I mean, are you gonna be able to cover everything?
It would, it would have to be general, but specific.
We have code sessions on how you annex something in already. All right. I'd say if we didn't have a wildlife refuge, it wouldn't be an issue. Well, there, no, no. And I could see like in there, I mean, you can't. Yeah, there's, that's a situation, maybe you'd have to do, uh, let it be annexed into another district if you can't, cause you can't, well, that the refuge isn't gonna let you put tile through their land.
One, one of the requests we have for annexation incorporates acres that don't belong to any district right now. So they have to have access one way or the other. The south and east would be to the Union Slough, which they don't have access to. The north and west would be into a district aisle, which was relatively recently improved.
Flat four, you remember?
Yeah.
Yeah, you weren't on board and we did let, you, you were. We did let four on, on drain four.
So, so some of that is, could be, some of that policy could be spelling out the things that would be considered in that decision and whether they would pay a back assessment or anything that way, to be fair for the rest of the district. It, it was recommended by Tyler that we have a policy. So let me clarify our intentions of how we're handling all situations under this category. It's not just a decision here, a decision there. That was the intent of this.
She recommended it to every county?
I don't know that every county has all situations.
Well, they probably would that sometime.
Might eventually, but.
If every county's gonna have their own policy, why do we have, why do we have a drains code? The things, the code, how you do it, the drains code is the law of land thing. And if, and we could be challenged, if we had our own policy here, we'd be challenged because our policy would be different than what the Code of Iowa says. So they need to take you to task. It's, oh, you're not following the Code of Iowa. So I, I know.
Policy wouldn't be contradicting the code. It'd be clarifying.
It'd possibly be more specific to the Code of Iowa, but I don't know how, different situations, but.
I guess I, I'm not, I, I guess I'm not convinced that we need to spend thousands of dollars on attorney fees to, to write up a policy which is already covered by the Code of Iowa.
What does Jim Hudson think?
Yeah. Again, you guys, you haven't done.
We are gonna have a conversation.
Well, I don't, I mean, maybe he says that, maybe he might say, yeah, this county's doing, this county's done it. And I mean, this is what I would maybe do and I'll charge you a thousand bucks, I don't know.
In all reality, he knows the code well enough. Whether he wrote a policy from scratch or he, he's got an example to pull from. He'd probably be able to do a majority of it in a short amount of time. He'd probably have, I mean, he could probably spit out most of his ideas in a half hour phone call, to be honest.
You ever go and Jim to do anything in a short time?
No, I mean, I mean relatively is, I don't think it's gonna be a six month project that takes ten thousand dollars to accomplish. I, I don't think we've ever had a bill from him that big, have we? I mean, usually it's a couple hundred bucks here or there.
I assume what you just made me contact.
I'd say, I mean, I'd be, I wouldn't be opposed to getting his opinion. I'd see what he says. Yeah, I guess I'd have to be convinced it's, it's worth the time and effort. Financial output to do it.
We'd want to contact him.
Tim, Marge, you wanna come and ask him if that's clear enough in the code or do we need something more specific?
I think.
You, you can do that. Then that'll answer that question.
Sounds good.
We have a payout for drain four. FEMA project. You put it in your folder, I didn't find it.
Yeah, it's under drainage.
Is it?
Yeah, it's there.
Okay. I didn't see it. Oh, I did too.
You thought so long ago.
It's been a long day. Any questions on the payout for drain four? We would need a motion to approve a three hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars, I think I was reading.
And make a motion to.
Motion by Stecker, do we have a second? Again, do we have a second for the payout for drain four?
Second.
Second, by law, any discussion on it?
How many payments are left on this?
They're gonna be getting close to the end.
Well, this, this brings their total work completed to eight hundred and eight thousand and they're already on track with one point three. So the number is just the number of payouts. I mean, they could be one every month. I mean, roughly half a million.
I'm curious on that job. At a wedding this weekend and Kenny, Lane, Kayla were wondering why there's a backhoe on their property again on the project. It was supposed to be done in August.
The project's not done. I said the pipes were installed.
The project's in their areas, it was complete.
No, I said the pipes were installed.
They had to sit, sit back with them to pick up the excess pipes.
I don't know the equipment.
She asked me to find out, ask you why there's a backhoe under when the project was supposedly done on their property. Cause they swatched and put that cattle thing that you told us about in, across the.
Yeah.
Down the road.
Any other discussion on drain four payout?
Yeah, I mean, the, the project as a whole is not done. There's no portion of it that's signed off as hundred percent complete. There's stuff that have the work done on to the tune of eight or thousand says nicely.
Any other discussion on drain four? All those in favor of paying the payout from drain four, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously. Did you ever ask them when they're, they got rock piled up along the whole banks on all of it or are they going to give that?
I know they have one long reach on the southwest side of Van Croft. You can see it right from A forty-two. They had put some rip rap in there. I think their other machines are farther up north yet, but yeah, they have rock along the ways along there. So that's probably one of their next things to work on.
There is north of Antone's Black Top.
I said it's a long reach.
Not sure.
They were.
I don't know if there's any rock piled there though.
They were clear up by two miles. Stiles was waiting the other day on the range, weren't they?
Yeah, I think they still have one up there.
That would be the end of the project, correct?
Yeah. They did have, I think about a hundred feet of excavation on the west side of Black Top, just to clean it out in front of the culvert that goes through the road, but otherwise everything else for the banks and all that is on the east side and down.
Anything else about drainage? If not, thank you, Marge. Appreciate it.
We did have, uh, the FEMA, people came on Thursday.